Go ahead.
Oh, ma'am.
All right, well, I am ahead of myself. There, yes. This point, this point, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, I'm not sure if Pastor Jackson, is he here?
Yes, he is.
Oh, Pastor Jackson will lead us in invocation. And I will ask everyone to please, able to stand, so please do so. We'll face the flag. And prior, we'll have the invocation first. Thank you. Boy, thank you, sorry about that.
Well, you said to acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our path. City of Baldwin Park need your divine direction. We're asking you, Lord, to put your hand up on our city council, the mayor, and all those that are working to make this city a great city, Lord. We're asking you, Lord, and touching our school district, Lord, that it would be safe, that children would be safe, Lord. We're asking you, Lord, and touching them where they will not be involved in the gangs and the drugs or illicit killing. Lord, we need you. Our businesses need you to uplift it, to open up businesses, to make businesses come to Baldwin Park and prosper. And we just thank you, Lord, that you touch our police department, that you keep them safe as they are out there in the streets trying to keep us safe. And so, we just thank you for Baldwin Park and we thank you for everyone that is working in Baldwin Park and the citizens, that this will be a great city. In the name of the Lord, we pray, amen.
A minute, thank you. At this point, we're gonna face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Wanna, first of all, thank everyone. Prior to, well, let's go ahead and take roll call now. Sorry about that, Christine, sorry about the city treasurer, Maria Contreras, all right?
Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches a todos. Councilmember Cruz Baca, Mayor Putim Cruz Baca.
I'm here. It's okay.
Monica Garcia.
Here.
I know Cruz. Councilmember Susan Rubio.
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Here.
Mayor Manuel Lozano.
Present. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and excuse Ms. Davila because she called in, she's not feeling good, so we'll go ahead and excuse her as well. All right, thank you, thank you very much for that. Wanna also open up the city council meeting as well concurrent with the finance and the housing authority as well. So, that is the clarification. Before we begin, wanna just, my deepest condolences goes out to what's occurred in Paris. It's important for us to be able to acknowledge and share our deepest condolences in such a beautiful country that has participated in many positive ways, so, and at the same time also, hopefully, there's religion tolerance amongst each and every one of us as we see what happened in Europe as well. Councilmembers wishing to close on anyone?
Yes, Mr. Alfonso Alvarez, long, longtime resident of Baldwin Park, passed away Sunday from a long battle with Alzheimer's.
What's his name?
Alfonso Alvarez on Bleecker Street.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco.
Yes, ma'am, I'd also like to close on behalf of Teresa Espirito Grande. She's a longtime resident of the city of Baldwin Park and her husband, I'm sorry, her son owns a lighting business here in our city and she passed away. She suffered from liver disease and unfortunately, she, you know, had to pass away, but keep her in our prayers. Also, like to just announce the, we have a wrestling extravaganza on Saturday, July 31st. I think it's a great opportunity for our kids to participate in that. It will be held at the Esther Snyder Community Center Gymnasium at Morgan Park, so hopefully, everybody keeps that in mind. It'll be, it's a great program put on by our Parks and Recreation Department, so hopefully you could all attend that. Thank you. And also like to welcome all the soccer league kids here. If you're all here, raise your hands. How many, oh, you're outside, okay.
Oh, okay.
They're lining up. Did I say July 31st? Wow, really off today, okay. That meant, I meant, let me see the date here. I didn't have my glasses on. I have a wrong pair. January 31st, is that 2015, at 6:00 PM. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco. All right, at this point, we're going to go in the presentation. The first one that we have is presentation of certificate of recognition to, excuse me. Yeah, you know what, let me, let me just cut that out real quick. Let me also just put the, actually, I have it. The announcement, which is required by state law, which is the announcement as required by the government code, section 5494, 54.3. Members of the city council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and the Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the city council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. So, required by state law to report this particular area. All right, thank you, legal council. At this point, the proclamation and presentation, the first one that we have, the presentation of certificate of recognition to Rosie Berzeda. Oh, where's Rosie at? Thank you.
Rosie, can your family please stand up?
Yes.
All your family members here?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let's have him, and Richard as well. So, let me read this off, which reads, "To Rosie Berzeda, retired owner of Penmar Beauty Salon in recognition of her 35 years as a successful business owner in Baldwin Park." So, what are we presenting to her? Huh? Are we presenting? You know what, and I, excuse me?
You were supposed to have.
Okay, yes, are we, is there a certificate or plaque? Or, okay, let's look through here. Hold on, it's, no, I don't.
Mayor, should we, should we all go down there and?
Yeah, that's what we'll do, but you know what? Yeah, we do have a certificate, we had a plaque, all right. So, let me just read this as we go on down, which reads, "Rosie Berzeda, in recognition of over 36 years," oh, not 35, 36 years, "as a successful business owner in Baldwin Park. Thank you for the unending dedication and service you provide to the residents, customers, and community members. The city of Baldwin Park wishes you a happy retirement." But before, before, I wanna say, Rosie, we've been friends for many, many, many years. I moved into Baldwin Park in 1979 and a longtime resident, all of us here who live in Baldwin Park. Wanna wish you success and, of course, you at one time were a single mom, bringing up your, 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 for 15 years, bringing up your beautiful family. I wanna recognize you for that because I think that you present the talent and as well as a good example for other women. Sí se puede, as we say in Spanish, and it's important for us. Then, later, later on, she met a mutual friend of mine for many, many years, and those of you that know the city of Irwindale would know the Berzeda family that are extremely well-respected and know. Richard Berzeda, thank you, her husband, as they both. He just, just to let, just to let everyone know, he's a retired Irwindale police rank, is a lieutenant or sergeant? Okay, as a sergeant for the city of Irwindale, how many years, Richard?
30 years.
30 years. So, let's also recognize the great talent. So, at this point, we're gonna, we're gonna work, actually, why don't you come up here so we get a picture with you, know who go down with the family? So, let's have you come up here and.
And I'd like.
Bring the, well, let's bring the family. How many are you?
Two.
Oh, then you're what? Okay, let's, well, let's, let's get one with her up here and then we'll go down.
Okay, hold on, Mayor. Four comments by councilmembers.
Yeah, then we'll go down. You know what, let's just bring the media. Richard, Richard, is anybody able to come up here?
No.
Sergeant, you able to come up?
I'm here.
Okay. Rosie, when was your official last day or is it coming up?
I still don't have an official last day because I, I don't wanna retire.
Okay, I may go over, I.
I'm semi-retired.
Rosie, I may go over and cut my beautiful hair then.
Oh.
Come on, come on over here, over here.
We'll just go down there.
Oh, right here, okay, right.
There's one at the ambulance, that's.
I'm semi-retired. I still wear my tattoo back, but it's.
Oh, yeah, yes. Where's Carrio?
Are you there?
Thanks, Jean.
Anita, what's up, Sharon? I haven't seen you in a long time.
Marina's here.
No, it's all right. All right, nice to see you.
If you're gonna give a picture to go by mommy, by my grandma, what are you doing?
I'm gonna get a picture.
We'll get you a plaque, okay?
Stephen's talk.
Let's get one second with her, like you're placing in the nap, for the president.
Yes.
Yes.
This is separate from the paper.
Bring the whole family up here, my stuff.
We're the family, yes, we the family up here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, here, once, once they're finished, Rosie, Rosie's gonna share some words with that nap, okay?
Rosie, Rosie, we see you there.
Okay.
She were wearing a lot of black things.
I'll give one, I'll give one.
Welcome to the restaurant, man.
Well, I think it is, tell me how are you?
Yay!
That was my first singing brush. I started singing because.
Let's get the headline up there. Where's that? I went to go try the restaurant food, it was good.
I don't know.
I thought I could.
We now with some sort of.
We are, yeah. Good to see you, John.
Sorry, with your mom, please.
No, you're not.
Whatever.
Okay.
It's family first.
They all in there, Mary?
Little bit tighter, little bit tighter.
For about my years, I have been awarded so many, I only brought a few up.
Take a few pictures, one, two, please, one, two. Aconazo.
One more.
Last one, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosie, so, how can you say some words over here? One, two, three, testing.
I'm gonna hear you sing, I wanna work here.
No. Aw, come on. You will.
Oh, I didn't see her. We might as well do the presentations down here, right? You might give me that.
Yes. All right, thank you. So, at this point, we're gonna allow Rosie Berzeda to say some words to everyone here, and I believe that, go ahead.
Wow, wow. Thank you, thank you so very much. First of all, I wanna thank God for allowing me to, to come this far. I'm a crybaby, a big one. And secondly, I would like to thank my mother and rest in peace my father that always believed in me. They were my bank when I was only 20 years old and became a partner with Mary Devia, my godmother. Sí se puede. I started very young, right after high school, but my first job was here at the Baldwin Park Theater. I don't know if some of you remember that, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, man.
Right next door to the, many, many years ago. At 16, the legal age, where I had a little permit from high school and, you know, accumulated grants and points and, you know, to graduate midterm, and, and my dream was to start a little business and thank God, my godmother, and, like I said, my father, my mother, they always believed in me, and all my family, my brothers and sisters. I wanna thank them all. And then, not least, my daughters later on, they have been my rock. They have been my reason for pushing and going forward every day of my life. And to all of you, all of you, my clients out there, that had also been made possible for me to stay in business in bad times, hard times, believe me. If you're going through a bad time, is, come and do your hair, it's gonna make you feel better. You have no money, it's okay. You know, you, you just feel so much better and I guarantee you that a business like mine is not gonna make you rich, but you'll always have money. For some reason or other, you always have money, and I know for a fact that I have touched so many lives, not 100, not 200, but thousands of lives out there. You know, because I, I, 35 years, it's a long time. And I feel very proud of myself and I wanna also thank Mrs. Anita Montenegro, rest in peace, I know she's in heaven. Thank you, Marina. Thank you to all the Montenegro family that, in fact, they were the ones that helped my godmother, you know, put the business together way back then. Crazy Argentine didn't speak enough English and took her to the city hall, we'll get your license, and she got us going. And rest in peace, Mrs. Montenegro. Thank you, Marina. And, well, there's just so much to say and so many people to thank. And again, I'm not fully retired, I'm semi-retired, okay? So, please look me up, I'm still, I still go to Penmar at least twice or, ah, yeah, twice a month, that's it. Twice a month. And I sold it last year, but it, unfortunately, it didn't work out for the, the other owners, so it's still up for sale and I know it's gonna turn out. I wanna give the opportunity to someone young from our city, and I know that I could find that young person that wants to strive and, and make it the best of the best. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And yes, we've known each other for a long, long time when he was a city council member.
I had hair.
And he had hair, plenty of hair, and, you know. And it just, you know, this is, this has been one of the best cities that I could think of. Baldwin Park is a strong city, a city that drives and, you know, it's, it's great to be in this city. I don't live here anymore, but I'll be, I'm happy to be here every time. Thank you so much. Thank you to all of you, and God bless you.
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna give the mic over to Marina Montenegro. Her mother served and sat right here as a city treasurer for over 25 years. Her mom was treasured by literally hundreds and thousands of residents in Baldwin Park. Their history goes back to 1908 and probably further, so they're our family, 1906, 1906. So, it's important for us to be able to recognize, and of course, your mother still lives with us. She was a good friend of mine, a good friend of all of us that are here. So, at this point, Marina Montenegro, go for it.
Thank you. I'm not here for myself, but I am here in my mom's spirit. Rosie's been cutting my hair for 36 years and it looks fabulous. She can do this with what I've got, you know, God bless her. But I have to say that Rosie is the American dream and back when we were involved with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Rosie was always, anything you needed, Rosie was extremely generous, is, not was, she's not dead, she's still standing here, is extremely generous. And, and my mom's last weeks, you know, she, she had these little hairs hanging and Rosie would come over and she, like she had nothing else to do, and she would get her three little hairs and she'd trim, "Oh, I feel so much better now," she would say, and she would give her, you know, just a fresh look and, and, you know, we will always be grateful for the, the small act of kindness, you know, that you keep saying it was, but to us, it meant so very much. And, you know, when Rosie, when we need Rosie, Rosie, we need you for whatever hair emergency we might have, Rosie's always there, but she's always giving back to the community. Pastor Jackson, I see you. She, she sponsors students, she sponsors young people, she sponsors Chamber of, anything you need Rosie for, she is a game player, she is a team player, she is always on your team, and our team is Baldwin Park, Irwindale, this local community, and Rosie is our quarterback. Thank you, Rosie, so much.
Thank you, oops. All right, thank you, thank you, Rosie. Rosie, maybe going by there, maybe you could put little streaks of black hair in my hair, but, but, but to the point where, or extensions, but hopefully, hopefully that is not so noticeable, all right?
No, we won't.
All right, thank you very much. All righty.
I have one last thing here, Mr. Mayor. I gave out some little papers earlier. It's, it's God Bless America. I would like you to please join me to sing God Bless America, 'cause our country is the best nation in the, in the world, and we must honor it every day. Tenemos que honrar nuestra nación todos los días porque vea en el mundo entero esta es la nación poderosa y mejor que le da a todo mundo la oportunidad del progreso. Si usted no quiere progresar es porque no quiere, pero esta, este país es para progresar. No importa que sea quien sea como sea, bajito, gordo, flaco, no importa, pelón. No importa, es para el progreso. So, por favor, si, si me pueden acompañar.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, can you read that up on top, my?
All right, so at this point, we're gonna sing God Bless America. Oh, before we do that, while the storm clouds gather far across the sea, let us swear allegiance to a land that's free. Let us all be grateful for a land so far as we raise our voices in solemn prayer. Ready, begin. God bless America. Land that I love, that beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the pires, to the oceans, white with home. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home. Thank you, everybody.
Gracias a todos.
Thank you, Rosie, and America's dreams do come true. Thank you. All right, the next, oh, hold on. Okay, so, okay, the next presentation that we have, a certificate of recognition. Oh, hold on, oh, picture time. Oh, okay.
One, two, and three.
Yeah. Yeah, hold on. Actually, I don't see, yeah, let me, let me go ahead, one last one, we have a, the presentation of certificate of recognition to Soledad Tobar Cruz. Is she here? Thank you. Where's her certificate? Where's her certificate? Where's her certificate? Uh, I don't see it. Come on up.
I see, I see, praying in the book. I don't even know if it's praying. Yes.
Yes. You know, I don't, I don't see her certificate, is it back there somewhere?
There's nothing.
No? Okay. Let me go ahead and read off, I know, it is. Let me just.
With the, with the soft one?
No, it's not. So, let me just go ahead and read off this portion that reads here, that reads, "Soledad Cruz, in recognition of her accomplishments as a successful author and poet, and recipient of the International Certificate of Participation in Art and Literature for Poetry." Just wanna thank her because she's a product of the city ballpark and a product of the adult school. She also printed a book that I have that she gave to me, and it's a very nice captions of who she is as a person and what she's write these various poems. So, wanna thank her on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park. We don't have the certificate, we're gonna make it up to you, but what we will do is place her name on the marquee and we will also add your name and picture to the ballpark now, so all 75,000 residents of the city ballpark know who you are and you are a gifted individual, and thank you very much for being here today as we recognize you on behalf of the city of Baldwin Park. Yes, so absolutely, everyone is.
I, I have the pleasure of working with Soledad on many volunteer programs, not only at the church, but also with Friends of the Library and a lot of different organizations here in Baldwin Park, the Historical Society, sorry, Bob, thank you for reminding me. It's wonderful to, that every time we need someone and we're asking for volunteers, she's always the first one to always help us, but her accolades are really long. She recently got back from Bolivia where she received seven awards for her poetry, and the story is, is that, and I need to let you know, is that Soledad had a fundraiser to be able to go on the trip. The trip was for all her accommodations minus the flight to Bolivia, and so, it got close to her leaving and she hadn't come up with enough money, and a lot of us were trying to have fundraisers for her and trying to see what we could do. She sold her car so she could make the trip and buy her airfare to Bolivia. So, this is the wonderful person that we have, not only here in Baldwin Park, but in a lot of our organizations, and I personally am extremely proud of the work that she does here.
We're gonna have her say some words. At this point, we're gonna go ahead and allow our author to say some words.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for this welcome. I'm very honored to be here and it's been a, it's been a very great experience for me to, to reach one of my dreams, first thing to make my book, and I wish that they opened a lot of doors for me. Everything has.
That reads, "Soledad Cruz, in recognition of her accomplishments as a successful author and poet, and recipient of the International Certificate of Participation in Art and Literature for Poetry. Just want to thank her because she's a product of the City Ballpark and a product of the adult school. She also printed a book that I have that she gave to me. And it's a very nice captions of who she is as a person and what she's write these various poems. So want to thank her on behalf of the City Ballpark. We don't have the certificate, we're gonna make it up to you. But what we will do is place her name on the marquee. And we will also add your name and picture to the ballpark now. So all seventy-five thousand residents of the City Ballpark know who you are. And you are a gifted individual. And thank you very much for being here today as we recognize you on behalf of the City Ballpark." Yes, absolutely, everyone is.
I have the pleasure of working with Soledad on many volunteer programs, not only at the church, but also with Friends of the Library and a lot of different organizations here in Baldwin Park. The Historical Society, sorry, Bob, thank you for reminding me. It's wonderful to, that every time we need someone and we're asking for volunteers, she's always the first one to always help us. But her accolades are really long. She recently got back from Bolivia where she received seven awards for her poetry. And the story is, is that, and I need to let you know, is that Soledad had a fundraiser to be able to go on the trip. The trip was for all her accommodations minus the flight to Bolivia. And so it got close to her leaving and she hadn't come up with enough money. And a lot of us were trying to have fundraisers for her and trying to see what we could do. She sold her car so she could make the trip and buy her airfare to Bolivia. So this is the wonderful person that we have, not only here in Baldwin Park, but in a lot of our organizations. And I personally am extremely proud of the work that she does here.
At this point, we're gonna go ahead and allow our author to say some words.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for this welcome. I'm very honored to be here. And it's been a very great experience for me to reach one of my dreams, first thing to make my book. And I wish they opened a lot of doors for me. Everything has a purpose in life and I think that God had a reason for me to discover a new world. The reason that I wrote my book, that was in 2011, is because I was diagnosed with a brain tumor. And when that happened, I thought that my life was over. So I didn't know how long I have time to live. So I decided to write my book mostly to leave something for my kids and my grandkids, which they're my whole life. After I did my book, I started putting everything in Facebook. I started getting involved and sending poems everywhere. I started discovering a new world. And I started sending my poems everywhere. So it's how they discovered me from Bolivia. And because I make a poem about the liberty in the world. And that poem, that's the one who made me, got invited to go to Bolivia and participate in this international get-together of writers and poets from all over the world. There was twenty countries, we were eighty poets and writers from all over the world. And we spent a week over there in Bolivia. And we were going to give, to talk to students mostly from grammar school all the way to universities. And we had talked to them to initiate them into literature and poetry. That was the best experience that I ever had. I meet people from all over the world and people are very great in Bolivia. The people are very lovely and they opened the doors for me. And to this day, I'm still in touch with them. And it's like God had a reason for me to start all over with my book and then start meeting all these people. Because it's like, I've been writing since I was nine years old. But every time I was writing, I was putting my pieces of papers away, just saving, you know? But I never, ever thought that I would make a book until that happened to me. And everything changed, everything, my whole life changed. Because it's like I discovered a new world, a new people that they feel, that they love, that they care the way I feel. And to me, it's just my life right now. Because I'm still disabled. So when I got invited to go to Bolivia, there was like something impossible for me to get over there. But I didn't give up. I keep trying, I do everything possible. I sold my car at the last minute because I see that time was getting close and I didn't have enough money for the trip. So I decided I'm gonna sell my car and at least I have for the trip and that's what I need. So I, you know, I appreciate a lot. And I want to say this, that Bob, being Bob from my Historical Society, he's been one of my biggest supporter. Also the people from the library, Friends of the Library, which now I'm Vice President of the Library. And I'm also a member of the Social Service from San Juan. And also San Juan helped me. They donated two hundred dollars for me. And my friends from Historical Society and my friends from the library, they also, they donate whatever they were possible for them. Because mostly they're people that they're not working anymore, they're retired. And it was something for me that really touched my heart. Because they were trying for me to give me the support that I need to reach my dream. And thanks to some of my neighbors, they knew and they came and helped me. And everything counts because it helps me to pay for whatever expenses that I had over there. And I came back home with twenty dollars in my pocket, but I was happy. I was happy because I was able to make it and to meet all these people over there that they opened their hearts for me and their arms. And right now, like I got invited to go again to Bolivia in October. I got invited to go to Spain. I had invited to go to Argentina and I got invited to go to Peru. This is an invitation that I have from the same people that are involved in the same world that I belong now. So I just pray to God that I have to keep working hard or do something so that we can be able to go and at least, at least go back to Bolivia. It's my dream to go back again. Because people there, they were very, they were very friendly, very... They give me everything. They opened their arms to me like they knew me, you know? And I feel very comfortable, so I wish I can go back this year. I appreciate every single one of you guys that has been a lot of support for me. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate you guys.
Right here. Actually, let's bring the family over here for a picture. Let's bring the familia. Actually, you know what? Can we get the backdrop of this from here? Alright, let's do the backdrop. Let's get one with her together and then we'll get one separate. Oh, wow. Kids and grandkids. Spread out over here, you guys, as well. Get them feel. Alrighty, at this point, we're going to go into the soccer league. I will have Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco read off these talented individuals' background. Oh, yeah, it's under. Actually, no, it's on this paper. The one I gave you.
Okay, so we're gonna recognize the Ballpark Soccer League for participating and being the winners of a weekend of soccer. If you could bring them forward, let's give these young kids a big round of applause. Come on down. And gentlemen, you could stand to my left or your right, over here. Let me read their accomplishment that they did and why we're recognizing all these fine young men that are soccer players that are here. FC Alansa, FC Alansa is a member of the Ballpark Youth Soccer League. Over the Thanksgiving holiday weekend, the FC Alansa team played over a three-day period in the AC Brea Thanksgiving Invitational. And those invitationals are very hard to get into, but this group was able to get in there, make Ballpark very proud as a team winning there in soccer. The teams from Ballpark Youth Soccer League do not typically compete in tournaments due to the scheduling. However, this year, the team participated. Teams who participated in these kinds of tournaments are travel teams that are more competitive and hand-select their players. FC Alansa is a regular team where any child can join the team. This was also the only team from Ballpark to participate in this Invitational tournament. The FC Alansa team took first place in the Boys Under Eleven Flight Two Division by scoring thirty-five points overall and beating out the other divisions in their age group. FC Alansa competed against other teams that traveled from Sherman Oaks and Los Alamitos. So let's give them a big warm round of applause. Are all the coaches up here? All the head coaches? Okay, let me read off the recognition. Each one gets the same recognition, but it says, "A certificate of recognition presented to each individual, Ballpark Youth Soccer League. The city council congratulates you and commends you for your hard work and dedication. Congratulations for your championship victory at the AC Brea Thanksgiving Invitational. Thank you for the favorable recognition you bring to your league and our community. Presented this twenty-first day of January 2015 by your one and only Mayor Lozano, our one and only Mayor Protem Cruzbaca, Councilmember Monica Garcia, Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, Councilmember Susan Rubio, our City Treasurer Maria Contreras, and our City Clerk Alejandro Avila." And also, just so you know, as always, we're gonna put you in the NOW. Your name will be up on the marquee on the park. And if we can, we'll put you on the, not the bulletin boards, the billboards that we have. Sometimes we get an opportunity, so we'll put you on the billboards if we can, alright? Give them a one big round of applause.
Okay, as soon as, as soon as we give the names out, I mean, the names, just walk over here, okay? Marcos Vivero. Tony Cisneros. Right over here. Andre Vargas. Alex Patricio. Santiago Arias, sorry about that, Santiago, Santiago. Miguel Garcia. César Súñiga. Oswaldo Barajas. Alberto Orozco. Hertzain Gaza. Is he not here? Okay, very good. Marcos Rivas. Ivan Rosales. Not here? Pedro Rios. Ricardo, Rico, Regosa, is that you? Amos Evi Regosa. Gabriel Peña. Another Marcos Rivas. Not here? Not here, okay. Don Gutierrez? Not here? Don Gutierrez, okay, that, oh, God, wow, that's a good one. Alright, brother. Alfred Barajas? What's, oh, how about, what's your name, hijo? What's his name? Oh, I didn't see one for her, Dardo. Oh, Lord, no way. No, we did not. We'll get your years, okay? Alright, buddy. Alright, sorry about that. Oh, boy, okay, we'll get it for you, okay? Sorry about that, buddy.
Hands very cold.
I need warmer?
Warm part, yours are warm.
We can do it, don't laugh. Presentations. Super long. I'm gonna open up the public. Alright, at this point, I'd like to open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, you have proximity two minutes. Thank you. Okay.
I think the party's outside.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, alrighty.
Good evening, Ken Woods, business owner and resident. I've got two points of concern.
Yes, sir.
One of them is Consent Calendar Item Six, the approval for the agreement for the stormwater pollution inspection. About ten years ago, a young man came to my door at the shop and said he wanted to come in and inspect my property for runoff. And I said, "Well, I really don't have any runoff." And he insisted and I, of course, said, "No." And he left. A week later, I got a bill for a hundred and twenty-five bucks for inspection, which never happened. And of course, the bill was canceled. But we're really great in all of these, what, the grant money. Why don't we see about getting, because it doesn't say anything here about money. All it says is inspection and fund adjustments. Fund adjustment scares me. How about getting a grant for this money so the residents don't have to pay for something that really, as we all know, is quite unnecessary? The other thing is parking. This on-street parking in our neighborhood and I'm sure other neighborhoods is really a mess. I hope, I know it's on your minds as well as ours because we've spoken about it several times. I hope that something can be developed to... I know many years ago, we had to have permits to park in front of our house and we had no problems. But of course, now with more people, more cars, it's just gotten worse and worse. I get to walk two blocks every morning and every night, which probably doesn't hurt me very much, but I really shouldn't have to. It'd be nice to park in front of my house instead of in front of Mayor's house. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Alright, we're gonna allow with public communication. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dan Kalman. Thirty-five-plus-year, no, forty-five-plus-year resident of Ballpark. And I live on Kenmore Avenue between Ballpark Boulevard and Frazier. And it's the lot that's part of that mega-five development that is on Kenmore that kind of concerns me. It's, I feel like if it's, if high-density housing is allowed to be built on that lot, the cat is gonna be out of the bag, so to speak. And then that whole single-family residential neighborhood will be a kind of a hodgepodge of high-density housing, small houses on smaller lots. And it, you know, it just will ruin the scale and the integrity of an otherwise nice little single-family residential neighborhood. And of course, I know this thing's probably gonna go through. So at the very least, I would request that the condos on that one Kenmore lot be two-story instead of three, just like all the other condos abutting residential lots in the area. And parking is another thing. He just reminded me that a lot of those folks living in that complex will probably park on surrounding streets. Because with that one entrance on Merced, you imagine the traffic jam getting out, going to work every day. About fifty-one units, I don't know how many people, probably, all of them work. many people, probably, all of them work, and it'll be quite something. So, even if a person had to walk around the block to get into his car to avoid that traffic jam, I'll bet that's going to be the case. And there'll be cars parked in front of everybody's houses all along Kenmore there, I think. And maybe not. Maybe you can make special dispensation and, and just keep that for the residential people. Anyway, that's what I gotta say about that. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. And we will be discussing the subject a little later. Good evening. Good evening, Thomas.
Yeah, I figured I'd get to the parking thing. Well, I know in some areas, they, Thomas Carey, former resident, soon to try and get back over here.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I wanna come back. I don't like San Bernardino's heat, and amongst other things. Well, in some areas, in LA and places, they have parking permits and things like that, designated areas with certain numbers, and those cars can only park in those areas. Because it seems that some people have a lot of cars, they're using the street for a storage facility and/or a junkyard. And the permit parking, if they have to pay for that, at least you'll know which car should be there and which one shouldn't. Because there's people that have, you know, it's like that fire down in, where is it, Santa Ana, there were 17 people living in there, how are you gonna control that with this condominium project? Or how many people are gonna live in there? I saw the drawing back there, I hate to think what happens, there was a fire in there, how would the fire truck get in there? Maybe have to use a water-dropping helicopter to put the fire out. But I don't know where all these people are gonna park. The traffic is horrendous with this train here, and there's trains down there, too. So I would think that you'd have something in place to limit, you know, all those, the number of units, because you know those people are gonna have at least two cars, there's no driveway there, so where are the extra cars gonna go? They're gonna go out on the street. And each people here are gonna lose their parking. It's wrong for a person to have to park, you know, a block down the street, why can't they park in front of their own house? And some neighbors got, you know, six cars, and maybe people are living in the garage, that's where the extra cars or the junkers should go. Alpha Street's good for the junkers, take them over to Irwin Dale and get rid of those things. So, if the code enforcement, you know, go around, or whoever does that, check, because the cars that are on the street that aren't licensed, they're not supposed to be there. They're subject to be towed away, and they should be. And then there's other cars, you talk about storm runoff and pollution and stuff, you got people parking their leaky thing that's leaking all kinds of stuff in front of your house, leaving a trail of transmission fluid and oil, and who knows what else, in front of your house. Of course, in front of their house, they wouldn't park that nasty thing there, would they? So, things like that need to be corrected, too. Cars leaking like that, it shouldn't be on the street, it should be in the junkyard, that's where it belongs. For everybody's sake, because all that runoff goes in the storm drain, right out to the ocean. But, like I said, the permit parking is a step in the right direction to limit the amount of cars that are on the street, because streets full of cars, it looks like hell. When you go in an area where there isn't a lot of cars, where I live in San Bernardino, one thing about over there, there's not a lot of cars. And the streets look more open, has a more open feel.
Thomas, your time's up.
Than a street full of, you know, jam, full of cars, like a parking lot.
Appreciate that, Thomas. Thomas, can't wait for you to come back home.
Yeah, I wanna come back.
All right, buddy. We'll leave the lights on. Okay. All right, buddy, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate that.
Hello, Council, I'm Mr. Luna. On your minutes here, ratification of intention of more lawyers. How many lawyers do we need? One for everybody here? I mean, we have lawyer, city lawyer, so everybody else needs a lawyer? If you need a lawyer, you're in trouble, okay? I understand we need a city manager and a city lawyer and some people that work up here, but how many lawyers do you need? Does he need a committee to work behind him constantly? Then we hired the wrong person. Think about that. You're gonna put these people on hold, and you're gonna pay them, no matter if you use them or not. What's wrong with you guys up there? Gee, you ladies, think a little bit. Would you put your son or your daughter on hold for two years, three years, maybe five years? No. So why are we putting lawyers on standby in case we need them? If you need them, there's millions of lawyers out there you can hire. That's enough about that. Okay, you wanna build these condos, these buildings that are back here? How many of you people live in Ballin Park? I'm assuming some of you do.
All the city council members required.
Okay. What we're gonna do, when these people wanna park, we're gonna give them your address, so they can park in front of your house. See if you guys like that. I live on Lerdford, all that construction, the people park all over the damn place. They don't care where they park. It's not their house, not their front yard. They get out of their car, they throw the trash down, and then I tell myself, where in the hell's the sweeper? It's gonna come today, or at least it was supposed to. Where are we thinking about when we build, let these contractors build these homes? I'm pretty sure, I'll put it this way to you, in plain English, these people that are out here, that are bidding for this property, so they can build something, I bet there isn't a darn condo, condominium around their neighborhood. You know why? Because they say, put it in the Luna's residence, but put it in Ballin Park, they don't let you do anything. Well, quit letting them do anything, start charging them money. You can't, you don't have enough parking for all those residents you wanna put in there? Pay me millions and millions, I don't mean one or two, I mean like 45, 60, 80 million dollars. You can put anywhere you want. But no, you said, well, let them do whatever they want, people can park wherever in the hell they want. That isn't the way to run a city. You tell these people, you wanna build? You wanna put these condos up there? Anything you wanna build. If you don't have sufficient parking for the people that live there and the visitors, you can't build. But no, you guys say, go ahead, build, build it in Ballin Park, they'll let you do anything.
Mr. Luna, your time's up.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Luna, appreciate that.
Also, the soccer league, have them clean their mess up.
Thank you very much. All right, moving along. Hey, Magda.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Magda Turellis. I didn't do it. Anyway, I got a great idea, do what we do in Brooklyn, New York, underground parking, that solves everything. And if they're even super nice, they make extra spaces for the people around the neighborhood, that's all you can do. Nowadays, when I was a kid, only daddy had a car, and that was transportation for everybody. Now, daddy, mommy, the kids, grandma, and the cousins that live there have cars. So what are we gonna do? We have to find parking. Build parking like they do in New York, underground, or on top of the buildings. That solves that. Rests my case. Have a good one.
Well, thank you very much, Magda, appreciate that. All right, moving along with public communication.
John Rios, citizen. Over the weekend, I went around as park commissioner, and I noticed some things that are very, very bad. Some that we need to correct as soon as possible. It's unhealthy. I have pictures right here. I talked to Dan on Tuesday, and told him some of the problems that we have with the sprinkling system that we put on, close it, two, three years ago. That water's running constantly, you know. We have parks and rec, we have a director, Mike Salas, got a bit of people that live, that work there. It should take at least 20 minutes to half an hour in the morning and at night before they go home and check the places out. On their water system, it already has mildew. We're gonna have to re-dig it and everything. I'm gonna give this picture to Dan, and you guys can see him later. This bad, it's very, very bad. You know, we need to get some, some in line for them to start doing stuff right there. It's, it doesn't take that long. I used to manage 500,000 square feet. Every morning, I would go through every department, every, right after lunch, I would do it. After, before I went home, I did it too, to make sure that everything was done right and everything was put away, water leaks or whatever, you know. But it is bad, it's very bad. You know, you can see the pictures, and they're bad. You know, some that we have to, as commissioner, I took the liberty of taking pictures, that's why I'm giving them to Dan, I talked to him on Tuesday, and I think you shed off the water, right? Yeah, thank you. But it's something that, you know, we have to work together, you know. I hate reporting stuff like that, but it was bad. As you can see him, you know, you can show him to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Moving along with public communication.
Margarita Vargas. You know, we spent like an hour on the presentation and proclamation, or whatever you call it, but it was nice, but I wonder if you can spend at least five minutes explaining number 14 on the consent calendar? Because I read it like three times, and I don't understand. Because it says here that the successor agency, we adjusted to reflect the return of $3,473,836 and adjusted to $21,901,790. That's all it says, but, you know, I'm sure it's a good explanation, but it's not here. So, I just wonder if you can say something about that. Thank you.
I will definitely, once the public communication is closed. All right, moving along with public communication.
Greg Tuttle, business owner. On our, the project that's back up on the wall here, I got a lot of concerns, you don't have any driveway. We spent a lot of time with DC Corp, trying to get them to build legitimate homes, and sizes, yard sizes, driveways, sidewalks, all this stuff. Now we're going right back into the old way of just cramming them in and letting them come in here with really no driveways, no sidewalks, either side of the street. You don't have enough parking inside this gated community. Because it's gated, it's sort of carte blanche, you can do whatever you want. And I remember DC Corp coming down one time, and they were begging the city to take over a street that the city allowed them to do. It was too narrow, and they had the red curb it all the way around. It was a cul-de-sac. People had to, anybody that wanted to park on the street, had to park outside the cul-de-sac. This thing that they're doing here with this is not right. It's not safe when you're gonna have people walking on a street to go down to the park if they want the kids to play in the park. They don't have, the, the units are not divided up properly with enough space. They need to set back these things, and I agree with maybe two-story instead of three. You're just gonna make the community, you're gonna have an eyesore, you have three-story, and then you got single-family. It doesn't look right in the community. I think we need to do a little bit more research on this, and at least give them some sidewalks, give them a driveway. You can't expect somebody to push the car, the button for the drive, the door, and drive right into your driveway. You don't have a driveway. You gotta drive into your garage. Now, you're gonna unload the kids, you're gonna undo the groceries in there, that means you gotta have two small, compact cars. It doesn't make any sense, any of it. The other thing I, that Mrs. Vargas was talking about, the successor agency, I understand part of it, but I think there needs to be a clearer deal of what assets we transfer and how much money we really owe the state. And the other thing, I'll clear up for Ken Woods on the amount of money that the city's wanting to charge every business owner. It's $116 for businesses and $96 for restaurants. For a kid to come around, I was here 15 years ago when they did this sham, come around, oh, well, you have water runoff, so we need to write you a little report. So I had the girl come back with a hose, and I said, squirt the hose, honey. Now tell me where the water's running. Oh, it's running backwards. I says, that's right, it doesn't go to the curb. Well, I've still gotta send you a bill. I says, fine, I'm not gonna pay it. I didn't pay it. This is not right to the businesses, that you're gonna tag on every business $116 in this city, and restaurants $96. I don't know how this justification's coming around, but I think you seriously need to think about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Governor. All right, moving along with public communication. Okay, see, no further interest, and I declare the public communication closed. Okay, successor, successor agency, I'm gonna have our CEO give us a little background on then the actual money that's been allocated.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, on item 14, the action that we're taking tonight is the result of a review by the State Controller's Office. And historically, what happened is on Jan- January 2011, the former Community Development Commission made a lump sum repayment to the city. After this repayment was made, the state legislature passed a law retroactively prohibiting such payments. The new law also did away with the Community Development Commission, and also brought into question these loans between the Community Development Agencies and the cities. So what's happened now is the State Controller's Office has reviewed the city's loans, they found that the loan repayment should not have been made at that time in a lump sum. So they are requiring us to pay it back. The good news is that they've found that the loan between the redevelopment agency and the city is valid, and so the city can continue to collect that loan back over time on the ROPS, which is the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule. So that really covers the action that is being taken tonight, and the information that came down from the State Controller's Office. If I could just real quick.
Sure.
Talk about item six, the Storm Water Pollution Compliance Program. Unfortunately, the city is required by a state and federal law to implement this program, and the city could be fined if they do not implement such a program. And unfortunately, the state nor the federal government provide any funding for that, and so the fees are to cover the cost of the services.
All right, thank you very much, CEO. At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and go into the consent calendar, council members wishing to pull any items?
I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself for the, specifically for item number seven.
Number seven?
And that's for reasons that I've stated in the past.
All righty.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, any council members wishing to pull any other items?
Yes, I'd like to pull number 11 for discussion. And also, number 15.
Number 15 as well, all right. Council members wishing to pull any other items? If not, at this point, can we entertain a motion? Consent countenance items, with the exceptions of items 11 and 15, and then item number seven, council member Monica Garcia has recused herself. So that is my motion.
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor, any objections? See none, so move. I will go to item number, council member Vice Mayor Cruzbaca, approval of public works reorganization. Yes, council.
I would like to ask Mr. Wall if he can please sort of explain the reorganization, what it will incur, and what will happen. Thank you.
So, on this item, there are two different, two different reorganizations going on. One is with the, with the city's engineering department. And in that reorganization, currently, we have a vacancy for an engineering associate. We tried to recruit somebody for that position, we were unable to find a qualified candidate who would accept the position at the salary that that's being paid. So we're upgrading that position to a engineering manager position. We feel confident that we'll be able to attract a person with the skills that we want to put forward with our capital improvement program. This will enable us to do a lot of our design work in-house, and should result in an overall savings to the city. The, the other part of this reorganization is at the Public Works Yard. In the Public Works Yard, we've traditionally had a public works operations supervisor who's overseeing the yard. We're finding that that's a little too much for one person to be in charge of, so we're trying to flatten the organization a little bit. Instead of an operations manager, we're having two operations supervisors, which are a step below that. We're hoping for these two positions to be, we're gonna have an open and promotional recruitment for them, we're hoping that we'll have in-house staff that are qualified to step into those positions. And what that'll do is that, that will allow the, the services that are being provided by the folks out at the Public Works Yard, they'll be able to be better supervised. Like I said, it'll flatten the organization, it'll give me better span and control over what's going on out. what's going on out there.
A question, you said that our staff, which I think is great to be able to step in, but are they going to be carrying a heavier load at that point? And what will happen if that, if that should occur? Will they be doing two, three jobs instead of the one that they're doing now?
No, they, they will, so if this were to be a promotional person that moves into that position, it would be a senior lead worker would promote into that position, their position would then be vacant and so it would, it would result in promotions on up the, on up the ladder and then to fill the ultimate vacancy that would occur, we would hire an entry-level person down at the bottom.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so at this point, council members have anything else? If not, I'm going to go into item number 15, which is the hearing. Could we let council member Monica Garcia know that we're back in session? Yeah, yes, sorry about that. Yes, so at this point, Vice Mayor, do you want to make a motion on the, on the item number 11 that you pulled?
I would like to make a motion for us to proceed with it.
All right, I will second. Any objections? See none, so move. Thank you very much. All right, so we do have a public hearing, which is item 15, which is the request for commission, it was actually just explained as well, so, right? Was just explained, a request for consideration of mitigate negative declaration of environmental, right, the mega phrase, sorry about that. Declaration of environmental impact and specific plans, amendment to specific plan 06-01 for the development of a 51-unit, single-family detached gated condominium project unit, single-family, excuse me, including the relocation of two wireless communication facilities within the R1 single-family residential, one and the mixed-use two zones. Additionally, the project includes a request for a zone change to apply the specific plan overlay to Assessor's Parcel Number 8552-017-004. A related request is for a tentative tract map to consolidate 12 lots or portions thereof into one. Lots of land, lots, excuse me, lots of land for a 51-dwelling unit residential condominium subdivision and one lot of land for a wireless communication facility within the same zoning designation. Location, southwest corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Merced Avenue. Location, Assessor's Parcel Number 8550-017-004, 8552-017-068. And also, this is applicant Killeen Metzmann, case number Z-554, SP 14-01 and TM-72195. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and have Amy give us a background before we open up the public here for those who are willing to oppose and those that support the project. Amy Harbin, you're on the air.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the audience. As the mayor stated, the item before you is a request for approval for a zone change to apply the specific plan SP overlay to Assessor's Parcel Number 8552-017-004. Number two, a specific plan amendment for a 51-unit detached gated condominium project and new 69-foot tall wireless communication facility in the form of a mono-eucalyptus. Three, a tentative tract map to consolidate 12 lots into one lot for a 51-dwelling unit residential condominium subdivision and one lot of land for a wireless communications facility. And four, a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. The subject properties are located at the southwest corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Merced Avenue totaling approximately 3.6 acres. The area is flat and the structures are slated for demolition in the current near future. The proposed project will include 51 detached residential condominium units, each with a two-car garage and private open space area and approximately 2,700 square feet of common open space, 18 guest parking stalls and a 69-foot tall wireless communication facility in the form of a mono-eucalyptus, which will house two wireless carriers, AT&amp;T and Verizon. Primary access to the property will be through an unmanned gated entrance along Merced Avenue with emergency access from Kenmore Avenue. The first item I'm going to give a little brief overview is the zone change. This project encompassed several properties, however, one of them did not have the specific plan overlay and it was not included in the original zone change at that time. However, it has been purchased and now the applicant is applying for inclusion and for that property in the updated project. The zone change will include the SP overlay on the property and does not impact the general plan land use designation. So moving on to the specific plan amendment, the original specific plan was adopted in 2006 and was envisioned at the time to include 12 detached townhouse-style units, a two-story multi-use building at the corner of Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard. And then that building would include retail, commercial uses, a private educational use and two wireless communication facilities. With the current proposal, the applicant proposed to eliminate the retail, commercial and private educational uses in favor of a detached residential project in addition to one wireless communication facility with two areas, two carriers. In your staff report, we've included on table three, beginning on page five, a comparison between the current underlying zoning designations on the property, the existing specific plan and the proposed amended specific plan. The specific plan also includes some design guidelines which identify a modern type of architecture with straight lines, flat roof lines and smooth stucco. The residential units vary between two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units at approximately 1,600 square feet of floor area to three-story, four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath units at approximately 1,950 square feet of floor area. And as I mentioned before, each of these units will have a two-car garage. Most of the two-story units are located along the back perimeter here. The remainder of the units that are in, that look like they're in yellow along there in the middle and then along Baldwin Park and Merced are the three-unit, or I'm sorry, the three-story projects. The wireless communication facility is over here on Baldwin Park Boulevard. Another also important item are the views from the project from the public right-of-way. This is the view actually from the corner of the proposed view from Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard. The applicant will be providing a significant amount of landscaping as part of the project along both of these thoroughfares, including trees, shrubs and ground cover, in addition to landscaping of the parkways. All of the lawn site landscaping will be maintained, adjacent to the public right-of-way will be maintained by the project's homeowners association. And this is the elevation along, the wider elevation along Baldwin Park Boulevard and Merced. Additionally, as stated prior, there will be a new wireless communication facility located adjacent to Baldwin Park Boulevard in the form of a mono-eucalyptus tree. And as you can see here, this is what it's proposing to look like. And then we've also outlined just two of the several companion trees that they are proposing as well. So moving on to the tract map, the tract map portion, what it will do is it will involve the consolidation of all the 12 properties into one lot, which will then be subdivided into a 51-detached dwelling unit residential condominium subdivision and one lot with about 1,600 square feet of area for the wireless facility. As typical with subdivision maps, as you're aware, we send those maps to numerous outside entities for comments and conditions. And as shown on table four on page eight in your staff report, the city received comments and cleared for public hearing from both the county fire department and the LA County Sanitation District. Those comments and conditions, in addition to any other comments and conditions from the city's Public Works Department, are included in the conditions, excuse me, the conditions of approval. So, moving on to the Planning Commission public hearing, other than things that were discussed at the public hearing, such as increased traffic and on-street parking, another concern voiced at the Planning Commission meeting was the impact of the three-story structures on an adjacent Kenmore property. In order to reduce this impact, the applicant has relocated the windows on the three-story structures in the master bedrooms on the third story to the side. And as opposed to providing a blank wall along these elevations at the third story, has provided a higher six-foot-high window that will provide light, but will not be one of those windows that you could just walk up to and look out of. It will be above typical height. And this is what it would look like from that property. Additionally, when this was brought up at the commission, the commission felt that an additional, additional things were needed. And one of the items that they requested was a condition that the applicant, along all those properties that are adjacent to the Kenmore properties, all of these properties, that additional landscaping be provided in the rear yard areas to reduce the impact of those units on the adjacent properties. And that would be in the form of landscaping such as cypress trees within the rear yard areas. Those, that landscaping would be maintained by the property owners and then also enforced by the homeowners association. And we included that as a condition of approval. So ultimately, at the conclusion of the Planning Commission public hearing, the commission voted 5-0 recommending the city council approve the entitlements and the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. So at this time, staff in the Planning Commission recommend the city council open the public hearing and following the public hearing, one, adopt a resolution 2015-47 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park Approving and Adopting the Mitigated Negative Declaration of Environmental Impact for a Zone Change to Apply the Specific Plan Overlay to Assessor Parcel Number 8552-017-004, a specific plan amendment to an existing specific plan for the development of a 51-unit, single-family detached residential gated condominium project, including the relocation of two wireless communication facilities and a tentative tract map to consolidate 12 lots or portions thereof into one lot of land for a 51-unit detached residential dwelling unit condominium subdivision and one lot of land for a wireless communication facility within the R1 single-family residential and MU2 mixed-use two zones. The location is Assessor's Parcel Numbers 8552-017-004 and Assessor Parcel Numbers 8552-017, Parcells 068 through 078. The applicant is KLL Investments LLC, the case numbers are Z-554, SP 1401 and TM-72195. And, two, introduced for first reading and by title only and way further reading ordinance 1368 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Zone Change, Adding the Specific Plan Overlay of the Property Identified with Assessor Parcel Number 8552-017-004." The applicant is KLL Investments LLC, the case number is Z-544. And, three, adopt a resolution 2015-048 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact and Approving a Specific Plan Amendment and Tentative Tract Map to Consolidate 12 Lots or Portions Thereof into No More Than Two Lots for a Detached 51, Detached 51-unit dwelling unit residential condominium subdivision and wireless communications facility within the R1 single-family residential and MU2 mixed-use two zones. Assessor's Parcel Numbers 8552-017-004, 8552-017, Parcells 068 through 078. The applicant is KLL Investments LLC, the case numbers are SP 1401 and TM-72195." And this concludes staff's presentation.
Amy Harbin, could you repeat that one portion? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, thank you. I'm just kidding, Amy, all right. Thank you, thank you very much, Amy. Okay, so what I'm going to do at this point, I will open up the public hearing and I will, at this point, request those that are opposed to the actual project itself, we're allowing you to come up here, to speak, you have approximately two minutes. So anyone interested, at this point, I will take those that oppose the project. Thank you very much. Yes, Thomas, yes, sir.
Yeah, the, this project, it seems like you want to cram as much as they can into one little place. These, this Killeen Company, that's what I'm going to call it, doesn't care about Baldwin Park. They're jamming all this into this one little space. Wouldn't single-family houses be better in there? Plenty of parking on the street in there for them. Parking on, and they'd have an actual driveway. I know it means more money for this developer, maybe a little more tax money for the city, but what I'm wondering is where the hell's all the water going to come from for all these people that are going to be living in here? We're in a drought. The last thing you should be doing is high-intensity building. Traffic isn't bad enough over here. I'd like to come back, but I don't want to come back to a hornet's nest full of cars. But this project, I just don't, and then they say, oh, they're going to have the windows at six feet. Isn't it true that the average height of people is getting, they're running about six feet, 6'2" nowadays? So, if anything, it should be seven feet. So, I just don't see why it's so intense to jam as much as you can into the smallest possible space. It doesn't make any sense. And then complain that there's no parking and that, of course, there's not going to be any parking. You have all these places in there. So yeah, I'm opposed to, for the sake of the people here. I wouldn't want that next to my single-family residence. It just doesn't, it's going to ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood with that there. It says, why not single-family residents? The trash truck can get in there, the firemen can get in there, anything can get in there. Why jam so much into such a small space? I don't understand that. Why insist on doing that? They don't only do it here, they do it other places too and it looks like hell. You have all these things, all these people crammed in there. And how are you going to control this association? You get a few in power and we know what happens there. They abuse the other residents in there. We have a single-family where it's open to the streets, you don't have that problem. And, but like I said, where are you going to get the water? Where's the water going to come from for all this? How did that get passed? We're in a drought, doesn't, I don't know if we're going to get any more rain this year. But more high-intense building? Why? Why not single-family residents? The people that live around there shouldn't have to look at this thing. They're probably going to have to move to get away from it. Maybe they moved to the north side, they don't have it over there yet. But I don't understand why you feel the need to jam everything all into one little place. Oh, it might look great on paper, but look at it, take a good look at it. How's a fire truck going to get into those narrow places? You know how big those things are. All the power steering in the world isn't going to help. And where's, they are the open space, why do they have to have the center part crammed full of them too? I don't know how many are on there, is there eight there in the middle or 10 in the middle? Why isn't that open? Why is it, why is it so important that developer jams so many places in there? So he can make more money? Because that's what it's really about, right? Isn't that what it usually is? The developer's going to rake in a lot of money, at least he thinks he's going to.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm out of time. Okay.
Hit that, buddy. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Good evening. Greg Tuttle, I just want to get this on the record on the opposed thing, what I said during the other public statement was about that the parking, I'm afraid that they're going to be parking outside that unit, taking up a residence parking. Also, Merced and Baldwin Park is very congested there. They're going to be coming out, Merced. Traffic is backed up on Merced, waiting for the stoplight at Baldwin. The no sidewalks, they got to have a sidewalk one side of the street for the kids to be safe and walking to the park or wherever they're going to walk in the streets. It's not safe. There's no sidewalks, no driveway. You can't even pull your car in and empty out the groceries of the kids, you have to drive straight into the driveway, into the garage. That's not safe. The congestion with what they're doing there, they're not using, they're using walls of the house to be the fencing and the boundary lines. That's not right. I mean, they need open space. Why don't they just make it attached, put more units in and make them attached? Because obviously, they're not giving them any space. Make them attach units, do more units and give us the sidewalks and stuff that they need to walk around that street and be safe in that closed area. That's what I say. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Hello, I'm a Baldwin Park resident. Three-story building, two-story building. Downtown LA had a fire yesterday or day before, some little girl took her life. Why? No escape at all. Say the door is burning, what are they supposed to do? Fly out the window? The lady showed the three-story building, there's no fire escape, there's no ladders, nothing to get out of that. Ground floor starts a fire, what are you supposed to do? Walk through it? Nobody can. That's one thing that young ladies should have pointed out to these contractors or whoever wants to build this. Where's the escape for these young people? Twin Towers is a good example, look what happened at Twin Towers. This is a three-story, same thing can happen. Fire down below, what are you supposed to do? They were throwing a baby in Little They were throwing a baby and little kids out the window in LA so they could make, you know, survive. Why? Cause the people that built that one didn't give a hoot about who lives there. All they worried about, I'm gonna make $90 million and that's all that matters. Oh, a body dies, somebody'll take care of that. Think about this when you allow this to be built. Nobody, including the people that are out here looking at this also, think about a fire. It can happen anywhere in this world, anywhere in this country, anywhere in Baldwin Park. Think about that. Would you wanna live in a three-story building that you can't get out of? Only one way, downstairs. And if it's burning, what are you gonna do? Number one, if you care about your family, you're gonna throw them out the window, hope they make it. And number two, you hope somebody down there will catch them. And number three, more likely somebody's gonna get hurt. Fire trucks gonna come in that little street down there at the end. Have you seen these big, uh, fire trucks, the hook-and-ladder guys? They're gonna make a turn, they're gonna go straight, and then what are they supposed to do? You sit there? When you guys let people build this stuff, you should look into all of this stuff before you even let them draw. If they can't show you the progress, progress is to make it so people can get out if there's a problem. So far, this, one way in, one way out, that's the name of it. That's what they call these little cities, one way in, one way out. Because everybody that's okay in this is the one-way-in, one-way-out family. Think about it. I wouldn't live by, I wouldn't, I wouldn't live there. I may be one of those fortunate that I was able to buy a home. These people will buy this because.
Mr. Luna, your time's up.
It goes to three minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Luna. All right, move along with public communication.
Ann Kalman again. Uh, what, there's four three-story condos on Ken, along that lot on Kenmore. Uh, I think it was stated at the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, when asked, they, uh, the prices were going to be, you know, high three, low fours, or whatever the market will bear at that point. What are they gonna lose if they put two stories in there? You know, a hundred thousand each, you know, $400,000 for a huge project like that. It doesn't sound like that big a deal to build two stories in that one finger of a lot that's really a Kenmore lot. And another thing I thought about too, is I really don't understand why a person has to be, uh, you know, gazillionaire living in Arcadia, have a nice lot, room for RV parking or boat. Uh, these, these lots are, are nice, single-family residential lots, they happen to be pretty good size, but so what? Why do you, why does, why can't an average person own a, a nice lot like that without the possibility of being inundated in the future by high-density housing? I understand why you need it. Most of the cities around here are plagued by, um, underfunded liabilities and, you know, there's gonna be a lot, a pretty good tax base in there, property taxes. So I understand that point. Anyway, thanks.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, sir. Al Capodero.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. Normally, I wasn't gonna speak, but I, Mr. Mayor, you and I were members of the planning commission many, many times ago. I don't think this development is community-friendly. I think we wanna do something that's community-friendly. No sidewalks, 1,900 square feet, three, four-bedroom house. You and I live in the same neighborhood. How is Vidal Circle and from Puente Avenue going to West Covina. Some of the people that live here are here, we can't find a parking space. What's it gonna be like over there? If you have a four-bedroom house, odds are you have four people living in the house minimum. It'd be nice if, and all of those will be most likely drivers, so you need a four-car parking space. The other two are gonna come up in the streets. You and I know that because it's happened in our neighborhood. Also, the sidewalk to me is the most important thing. Have you tried walking on the north side, going west on Ramona, from Merced all the way to the Six of Five, three-way? You can't walk there because there's, there's no sidewalks there. So you have to cross the street and walk over there because you'll get run over. There, we make better concessions, good thing, for people that ride a bicycle than a pedestrian. We wanna make sure that the pedestrians, the people that walk, to make it safe for them. And the only thing I can think of maybe going back to the drawing board and reducing, I don't wanna talk about money and financials and anything like that, but just make sure that honestly, is this really a friendly community that we wanna build? I don't think so. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, move along with public communication.
Yeah, my name's Daniel Prigana, I live on Kenmore Avenue. I just wanted to tell you, I'm against this project, uh, let you know that I'm against it. I would rather see single-family dwelling and I care a lot for our street parking. I'm just against this whole project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that, thank you. All right, move along with public communicate, uh, the public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak, opposing the project? All right, I will now go over, at this point, I will entertain all those that are in favor of the project, so you could come up here, approximately two minutes. Good evening.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Jim Powers. I'm with KLL Investments. And we'd like to thank the city council for this opportunity tonight. We appreciate very much, um, all the hard work that staff has put in and, um, in getting this project ready to, uh, bring to the council tonight. Again, we thank you. If council has any questions, we've got our engineer here, our consultant for, um, the cell towers, and our architect, and we'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions that you have. With regards to a couple of the things that were brought up, um, by members of the community, uh, this project has been completely reviewed by the fire department and, um, they've approved it, uh, to move forward. Uh, I would also like to say that all of the houses will be fire sprinkler, um, which is something that in the past has not been required, but, um, currently it is, and all of these houses will have fire sprinklers. This development meets all of the parking requirements, and I know that, uh, some of the surrounding neighborhoods have concerns, uh, mostly along Kenmore. I think that if anybody were to park, uh, outside of the development, that they would probably choose Merced or Baldwin Park Boulevard first, cause it's closer to the entrance. And we can't guarantee that no one would go on Kenmore, but, um, there, I think there is enough parking onsite that, um, if someone were to have a birthday party or something, there might be some additional vehicles, but, uh, my guess is that they would choose to park on Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard before they would choose Kenmore. We're excited to, to come in and, uh, do this development in the city of Baldwin Park. We love all the landscaping, uh, we think that, uh, uh, the landscape architect has done a wonderful job. All of the walls around the perimeter will be protected from people, uh, trying to tag them. We'll have a lot of landscaping outside those walls, it'll be tiered, we'll have, um, multicolored, um, different plantings in there and different heights, so it'll step up and I think it'll look beautiful on the outside. With regards to sidewalks, I think it's important to, uh, remind everybody that, um, these streets are private and this is a gated community, and so there won't be, um, people coming in, just driving through the neighborhood, um, and creating a lot of traffic issues or safety issues. Uh, the width of the, the driveways on the inside have met all the requirements for, uh, the fire department, for them to bring their vehicles in and to fight a fire if it were to, uh, break out. So again, we have, um, pretty much everybody here that can answer any specific questions that you might have, and we're more than happy to do that. And again, thank you very much and thank you to staff for all of their hard work.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. However, if we council members have any questions of the developers, we'll ask them as we go through. So at this point, I'm gonna open it up to the council members that have any questions.
Um, Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Cruzbaca.
Thank you. I would like to, uh, pull this item only because it was an overwhelming amount to look at and I do apologize, I would like to pay more attention and, and review it. And I would also like to, if we could have a special meeting so that we could discuss this. This is a big project, there's a lot of questions, I also have reservations, um, so if that's possible, I would like that, if you please.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, there's a motion by, uh, Vice Mayor Cruzbaca to move this, table this to a future meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second? Are there any objections?
Erin, I just wanna ask.
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, add.
That's fine.
And I think, you know, Councilmember Cruzbaca, I'm sorry, Mayor Potem Cruzbaca just joined us and I think, you know, we were all here during the years of presentation, so I wanna give her the courtesy to, to be able to ask the questions and look closely at this. Thank you.
All right, so there's no objection, objections at this point, what we will do is plan this for a future meeting, and I guess we'll do a special meeting for this, to involve the general public. All right, yes, uh, Councilmember Monica Garcia.
You know, I, I'm fine with moving the item, continuing the item to, uh, later date, but since it's fresh, I'd like to, and since we have community folks here, uh, I'd like to go ahead and have, provide some comments and engage in some discussion. First of all, I'd like to know the width of the, of the sidewalk along Baldwin Park Boulevard and Merced Avenue. Amy, what, what does that look like?
It's not gonna be taken away, right?
They're all existing, to be honest with you, I don't know what the width is, I do think they are a little bit wider than typically what you do see in a standard residential neighborhood because they are along major thoroughfares, but.
So those are, those will be existing and they will not be improved?
Right.
And what is the setback on, uh, from the sidewalk, do you know?
To the wall or to the actual structure?
To the wall and to the structure.
Come up, come up, Herschel, come up to the, on the mic, please.
Just so we can, um, you know, just kinda talk about some of the comments that were provided by the community.
Ten-foot sidewalk along Baldwin Park, five feet along Merced.
Okay. So ten-foot sidewalk along Baldwin Park Boulevard, five feet along Merced, and it appears that...
Next to the right of it.
Right.
With a park.
Right. How, how, what's the distance between the back of the sidewalk and the wall? Five feet? Okay. So you'll have a five-foot setback between the backside of the sidewalk and the wall, and then there's also a setback from that wall to the dwelling unit.
Okay. So if we can make a note, um, the next time we discuss it, if we could review that item, that would be great. And, um, I do wanna just comment on the developers' responsiveness, you know, we've talked about this project in the past, so I wanna thank you because you were, you guys really stepped it up as far as the landscape, it looks really nice. Um, uh, you know, the architecture, uh, is, is, um, you know, you, again, you were responsive to some of our comments and concerns. And as you know, in the past, I had also mentioned the transitional height from the single-family to the development, and you, you were responsive in terms of, uh, bringing in the two-story homes along the single-family residential. I would really like if you could consider adding, you know, two-story to the Kenmore, uh, because again, that is adjacent to the single-family. So just to kind of stay consistent with that and, and to smooth the transition from single-family to the new development. And this way, it's, you know, single fa, uh, it's single-story, two-story, and then the three-story of the development. So if you could consider that, we would, I would greatly appreciate that, and as you know, it's something that, um, you know, I mentioned since the beginning, and you guys have been very responsive. So, um, let's see, one, something that I did wanna, uh, you know, discuss at the later meeting is the windows, um, just because I couldn't really see what, what type of windows, they look dark, but I could be looking at this wrong. Um, and then could we also discuss the, and maybe this is something that Dan Wall, maybe you can do some, um, pre-work in advance, but looking at some permit issue or, you know, looking at some permitting, uh, processes for Kenmore so that there, the concerns that were raised earlier about overflow of parking, you know, maybe we can be proactive about that and look into that, maybe talk with some of the residents, see if they would be open to it, just to mitigate that. And, um, and then I think the rest we can discuss at a later time.
Thank you.
All right, okay, yes, Vice Mayor.
I, I'd like to thank not only the planning commission, of course, but also our staff that has put in a lot of time and, and yourselves and Mr. Powers, who's behind you, um, thank you very much, but I, I think that we do need a little more discussion, I, at least on my part, so that I can feel very comfortable with this. And as you can see, Councilmember Garcia as well had some questions and some concerns. So I think that if we can have a special meeting, a lot of these questions will be answered, or maybe we can have them taken care of.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And, and if I can just add, you know, I mean, this, this is shaping up to be a really nice project. This is the first time that we've heard from the community, and so, you know, it's important to try and be responsive and, and try to mitigate some of their concerns, so I hope that you recognize that as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, Herschel, thank you very much. Amy, and thank you very much for the developers that are, uh, currently here. So we'll set that up for, uh, hopefully sometime in February or some. All right, so at this point, a couple of items, I'm gonna go back, but let's go and over to the city council acting as a successor agency of the Community Development Commission, which is on consent calendar. Uh, so at this point, unless council members have any questions, I know Mr. Dan Wall, or who was it that answered some of the questions earlier? Okay, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, uh, for approval.
I'll second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, we're gonna go back over to the, um, I missed out the revision to staff report, and thank you, Vice Mayor, um, for reminding me. This point, we have the resolutions of the, um, different, uh, particular committees that we all... Do you guys wanna remove this for the next meeting?
Amy, please. You know what, if I can, I was gonna say, if I can make a motion, if we're all comfortable with it, I don't mind making the motion to leave us this, and we're just...
For me.
Is that, I'll make a motion to leave us?
I'll second.
And then we move on.
Any objections? Boy, that's quick. All right, thank you very much. Boy, talk about a fast meeting there. All right, so at this point, we're gonna go over to the, uh, fine, I think we have the finance authority, uh, first, so at this point, I will now open up the finance committee, consent calendars, which is the treasury report. So I will move for the treasury report, that's my, my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Uh, so at this point, um, at this point, I'm gonna vote for adjournment of the finance committee.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Okay, all right, thank you. At this point, I will now open the housing committee, and the housing committee, uh, have, uh, consent calendars, and I'll move the motion for the consent calendar.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, I will move for adjournment of the, um, of the finance commit, excuse me, the, yeah, the...
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move.
Um...
So let me, let me go back to the city council, cause I think close out the city council. Unless you want to have some questions, go ahead.
No, I ju, I would just like to, um, I know that there has been talk about a city, state-of-the-city address.
Oh, yeah, I heard, yeah.
And I know that the Baldwin Park Business Association wants to sort of do it in conjunction with the city of Baldwin Park. Can I direct, I would like to direct staff to please give us, uh, maybe for our, the next council meeting, to put together some type of a budget and some, um, ideas. I know that there were some ideas that had been tossed around to sort of combine it with an employee recognition, uh, breakfast. Uh, I don't know if that'll be possible at this late a notice, um, because I believe some of the dates for the state-of-the-city were in March, but I would like to sort of, sort of, research that and take a look at that, and I would like to direct staff to please help us with that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And, and council members, anything else? Okay, real quick, wanna just say that I will be absent the first meeting in March, so, uh, the vice mayor will be the acting mayor on the first meeting in fe, excuse me, February, I would say. I'm gonna be in, in Monterrey, Mexico, uh, my mom's only last surviving generation, uh, sister turns 90 years old, and I promised her, uh, a year ago that I would be there for that, so I will miss the first meeting, uh, in, in February, but I will return to the second one, so we could, uh, delay some of the items that we're gonna be talking to, to the second meeting, okay? So at this point, I'll move for adjournment. Hello?
I'll second.
Okay, second by the vice mayor, any objections? See none, so move. Viva Baldwin Park. Lieutenant Staley, thank you for being here this evening. She's lieutenant, right? All right. All right, thank you. Lieutenant, how many years have you been here?
Thank you.
Whoa, okay, thank you very much, thank you. Okay, I gotta get going. We're gonna keep this, right? We're gonna keep this?
I think we should.
Oh my God, you gotta be kidding me, okay.
Wanna keep and go look at it.
I wish, I wish you would've brought him over here.
I did, I did.
Oh, Lord, ever since. Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Well, we'll take care of all that, but...
Here, I'll, I'll, we have to look at one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you know what, uh, well, maybe this here, is that what I'm gonna do?
Yeah.
You can take it if you wanna study it, or you can...
Yeah, you know what, you know what, better yet, yeah, 'cause I do have a couple of things that I wanna review. Thank you, City Attorney.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
What do you, what do you want?
Let me see.
Okay.
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 Okay.[1749.04]